Next item on the agenda is update discussion on sports complex project regarding Mid Plains Community College.
And I'll, I'm gonna go ahead and go through the background first.
Okay.
And then if anybody wants to speak, they're very welcome to.
Sounds good.
I would like to go through the background here real fast.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna read the report that I submitted along with the council packet. And if anybody has questions, you can feel free to ask me. So the city is working on finding a way to bring Mid Plains Community College into its sports complex build out. On January eighth, the Mammoth Sports Construction Design Team have personnel from the college to introduce themselves and provide background on projects Mammoth has constructed. To show good faith towards MPCC, MCC, at the following McCook City Council meeting, the council approved adding MCC Athletic Director slash Baseball Coach John Olson and MCC Softball Coach Mike Mendenhall to McCook Sports Complex Committee to get their preferences and insight on the project, particularly the amenities most important to the college. Around that same time, the president of Mid Plains Community College and the McCook City manager spoke about Mammoth serving as the sports complex designer. MPCC's president expressed that his staff and himself are comfortable with Mammoth serving as the design team for the sports complex. MPCC's president expressed the college's biggest remaining issue is that the college wants to own the championship field, both baseball and softball. MPCC's president stated the college would like the city of McCook to subdivide the championship fields from the remainder of the sports complex, with MPCC to pay the city for the land the fields occupy. MPCC's president stated the college currently has four point five million dollars in different forms to build out the championship fields with the possibility of more if we were to own the championship fields. And by different forms, it'd be different pots that that money would come from. Mammoth is in the process of putting the numbers together for the total project cost, which will also include breakdowns for individual components. The estimate for the complete sports complex is approximately fifteen million dollars. Paul Greger at DA Davidson, which is McCook's department director, informed the city of McCook that the remaining voter approved half cent local option sales tax revenue dedicated to recreational projects could potentially generate nine million dollars. As such, between the city, college, and community hospital, the amount that could be available for the sports complex would stand at fourteen million dollars. That does not include any amounts from the recently awarded RCRP grant to the city of McCook or any other fundraise slash grant dollars. There are few issues to consider regarding the college's proposal that need to be discussed prior to determining the feasibility of the college's request, with a few of the items listed as follows. One, assuring that all McCook stakeholders have access to the championship fields. Two, determining whether ownership and two separate entities would complicate fundraising efforts. Three, determining whether ownership and two separate entities would complicate securing potential grants. Four, determining how to split revenue to provide both parties with adequate funds to operate and maintain their individual properties, both now and into the future, as the sports championship fields will more than likely be the largest revenue producer at the sports complex. Five, determining how much each party would pay for common spaces such as restrooms, concessions, parking lots, and practice areas. Six, certification of funds to ensure both parties have the ability to build the respective phases of the project. Seven, naming rights in conjunction with the city's current obligations, because we have obligations to Mr. Walters. Eight, determining how the requested split would impact the city's subdivision efforts with respect to the totality of the real property purchased in October of twenty twenty four. Nine, whether the city will be responsible for paying for construction costs associated with the championship fields, and if so, how much. And ten, whether the college is in a position to comply with the city's quick construction timeframe. The city of McCook does not want to delay the construction of this project any longer. City staff has recently contacted the attorney who helped the city develop a purchase agreement with the project when the project was slated to be constructed west of McCook. His name is Mr. Austin McKillips. Mr. McKillip has expressed a willingness to assist with potential joint partnerships slash use agreements with the college. It is important, or sorry, it's McCook's intent to work with the college regardless of ownership on developing a partnership or use agreement that will address all potential concerns. That said, city's direct staff strongly believes ownership of the sports complex should be held in the city of McCook. Numerous communities have similar ownership slash partnership slash use agreements with their respective municipalities, including Norfolk and Northeast Community College, Carney and U N K, Seawood and Concordia, Concordia University and York and York College. The city and MPCC slash MCC have operated under a similar arrangement since two thousand and two at the J C complex, with the city leasing the property from Red Willow County and permitting the college to use the property for its baseball and softball facilities. To the same point, when the sports complex was considered for construction west of McCook, the plan was for the city to own the property with the city, college, and McCook Public School District to enter into a joint operation maintenance agreement for continued care of the facility. City staff has never received an explanation why the college's position has changed from the arrangement contemplated in twenty twenty three. The city of McCook is committed to bringing MPCC, MCC into the sports complex project, whether the college pledges four point five million dollars or less than that amount. The city is committed to meeting the objectives of MPCC, MCC, and their desires in the sports complex. The college's success is important to McCook's success and vice versa. City staff feel a joint project with the city serving as the complex owner pursuant to partnership agreements was contemplated in twenty twenty three is the best way to assure the project is completed quickly and with as little complications as possible. It is city staff's hope that MPCC wants the same thing. The type of unified arrangement contemplated by the city staff will show that McCook and MPCC, MCC are committed to one another in southwest Nebraska. As the city has learned with its partnerships with the M E D C, Community Hospital, McCook Public School District, and others, McCook citizens appreciate cooperation between our communities pillars. There is no better way to get the public's support for this sports complex project than more than here, both now and into the future.
Thank you. Okay.
We'll start with John. Mike might add stuff to it.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Well, first off, I'm gonna say that while I answered the question that Nate had mentioned that he doesn't believe was ever answered, I'm solution oriented, and at that point in twenty twenty three, I believe we were sailing. This project was, was going nowhere. And so I did bring to Nate in a phone call that we would be interested if, once they secure the ground of Walters, that we would consider possibly partnering if we could own the, those ground underneath our fields. And that has not changed since the fall of twenty twenty three. That is the exact reason that we, our position changed, because we felt we were going nowhere. So that's, that's why.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
So going to where we're at now, under the request for partnership, you know, we agreed. I live in North Platte, where there's a lot of instances where North Platte does not get along with each other. You know, you have baseball on the south side, you have softball on the north side. You've got two community college campuses, we go on and on and on. So I appreciate wanting to work together, and I appreciate the reasons the city has, but we also have reasons that we would like to consider the same. Partnerships require two collaborative partners, and we really believe that. And I will say that in the last several months, we've had conflicting information received. We met in October, we had talked about what this could look like, October thirty one, with a follow up meeting with that with John, Mike, Kelly, and myself, and I mentioned the same thing. Wanted to know about ownership and naming opportunities for those two specific fields. But I also said that we'd like to sit alongside through this process, to feel that we felt that this would be something we could work jointly on. At some point, if it wasn't, then we'd walk away, and at least we know we tried. So after that meeting, we were not, we were not brought in to, to provide input on RFP, or review the RFP, even any of the firms that have submitted the, that submitted their packet for the RFP. On January eighth, we did meet with Mammoth, followed up the next day. Mr. Snyder tries to call me, called board members, trying to get my feedback on that conversation. I finally did meet up with a conversation with Nate on, on January thirteenth. Same thing, wanna know naming opportunities and ownership. And when I, when I got the request from Kara on Wednesday about coming to this meeting, I said it's kind of short notice. I wouldn't like to have the answers that I asked for on January thirteenth, and the response I got back was, that's why I wanted to inform the city council to provide those answers. So a lot of the information that Nate provided is, is not a list that I received personally up to this point. And so I think a conversation and meeting between administrations would have been more helpful to, to provide answers to some of those as opposed to this, this arrangement. So that's where I'm at right now. If I'd asked Kelly any feedback or things she would have said.
You know, I was just saying, you know, we were very impressed with Mammoth. And so had we been in on any of those conversations earlier, we probably would have also been very impressed with them. And they blew me away. They were all very impressive. But it's like being invited in at halftime. And so it was kind of, you know, we would have been, you know, at the same table very early on in the process. But like I said, it was like being invited in at halftime, and even now, having, like, having all these conversations happen without us being at the table, it's, it's hard, it's hard for us to come in and say, yeah, we wanna be part of a project that's just rolling, I mean, saying you've had thirty nine conversations about it, and this is one of the first ones that we've been at the table for.
And I will tell you that on the conversation I had with Nate on January thirteenth, because back in October, it was said that you were gonna have our contract to farm that ground in twenty twenty five as a supply twenty twenty six project. The first I saw of the accelerated tagline was on January fifteenth. When I talked to Nate on January thirteenth, he said, yeah, I'm gonna have to talk to Mammoth about slowing that project down. Now there is comment in there that we might slow the project up. We're two weeks past that. So I don't know where they're at, I don't know what the cost is, I know what my donors have, but I also have a member board that spreads out from Kansas, South Dakota, Gotham, to Ogallala. They have a whole lot of priorities on their plate besides just McCook. And so I have that, I have the McCook College Foundation Board also, which is a huge fundraising forum for us. So we had four point five million, I can't tell you that I have still have four point five million for the donors that were secured months and even a couple of years ago. But I'll do my best to bring them back if this is something that we can agree to.
And I guess I would also point out, just getting the agenda and getting the background, I wish it would say background according to city officials. That background and those reasons are just according to city officials. That's not our background. That narrative that was shared is not our narrative at all. Because those ten reasons, I could give you ten reasons why we should own it. You know, I could say, we don't get a lot of revenue from our games, we don't get a lot of revenue for championship things. The naming rights would not be an issue at all. If there was separate ownership, there would not be a naming rights conversation. They, the city fields would have naming rights of anything that the owners wanted. If we get separate ownership, the naming rights would not be an issue. The Benjamins could do whatever they wanted on their naming rights. Or whatever, whatever other donors were involved. The obligations, the, Mammoth flat out told us, we could break out whatever cost you guys want, however you wanna do, however many parking slots, all of those things. Common spaces, we can have those conversations, construction costs, splitting up those costs, obligations, even access. I think we can have off, just great conversations if we were good partners about what access needs to be for the communities, for the, for whoever needs to use it. I think that's gonna be just conversations that we can have about who needs to have access to those fields. We've had the same conversations with the events center, you know, what, what do we need to do to partner? We partner with R P A, we partner with the high schools, we partner with Mac Attack, all kinds of things that we already have in place for MOUs that we can get, get in place. So I just think that we've proven, and I remember sitting in that city auditorium when, I'll never forget, I had chills, when Dale Doon was like, somebody needs to think big and have these big projects, and we were all sitting there thinking, and then the, like, whatever, the next month Troy Bruns put the, you know, the McCook on the move projects together. This is like a culmination of all of those things. And I think we're right here, and the one thing that John said after we moved to Mammoth, he was like, this is the closest we've ever been, let's stay at that table. It's, that's where we wanna be. We wanna be at the table. But it does not make sense for us to invest even whatever it is, three, four, whatever million, if we don't own it. That does not make any sense to taxpayers, doesn't make any sense to our donors if we don't own the property.
And we have a similar arrangement with the city Valentine. They pass the sales tax renewal and give a million dollars, half of the cost of that entire campus. We have an agreement with them. If the legislature changed district lines and says you're no longer serving Mid Plains Community College, the city gets back. And they can give it to Western or Northeast or whatever they want to. We have those arrangements already. Same thing with if the governor or someone says community colleges shouldn't own or have athletics. Those are conversations and agreements that we could have back with the city to say, if we have to hold up shop for whatever reason, financial or legislative, it goes back to the city because we have no use for it. So there are, there are ways we can cross a lot of the, the questions that you have. But serving the community, absolutely. In small town Nebraska, I believe in collaboration, collaboration. And that's why I came back to the table in the fall of twenty twenty three, said, I think we can get this team back together, but we need to have ownership. And those two fields have a joint agreement on parking, on whatever else it is, we figure it out, and we'll figure it out. But again, I'm a solution oriented, and I'm gonna look for those ways to, the Elks Club, that thing would be sitting vacant right now. Had I not went to legislature and said, I need ten million dollars, and I'm gonna put nine million dollars back, because I don't know how we'd have fundraised nine million dollars to put that thing back together. But I think we've proven that with the quality of our projects and our facilities in this community, that we are here for the long haul, we're gonna invest in our community, and I think the baseball and softball field is the next step. John and Mike, from your standpoint?
I mean, for me, I've been in a lot of conversations from the very beginning, and obviously super excited for this. And I am one hundred percent on what is best for the community, and I am one hundred percent put by the college and support, you know, what we wanna do as well. You know, I know there's questions, you know, shared views, you know, I'm a, I was president of the American Legion Board for eight, nine years in a row. Now I'm the vice president, still auto, grew up here, graduated high school here, want this project to be successful, want to work with whoever to make the arrangement fair so everybody can use it, so the community stakeholders. This needs to be a community project. I get it. I fully get where we're coming from as a college. You know, I've heard a couple of other things, you know, to build out the maintenance. I would just encourage you to drive to the college and go through the buildings. And every one of those buildings is a fully functional pristine building. McMillan Hall built in nineteen thirty five. The dorm built in nineteen sixty, five million dollar upgrade, six, seven years ago. Library nineteen seventy two, what was that upgrade? Two and a half million dollars a couple of years ago. Like old buildings that are perfectly functional buildings, and not, and, and some of them are back to that. I'll give you just a quick story. I was an employee at the college in two thousand and two. I came back, I left, came back in two thousand and seven. Was January, excuse me, July fifth was my interview. I was in a suit and tie, not a suit and tie guy. July fifth, hundred and five degrees. They said, hey, we're gonna give you a tour now. I said, no, I was, I was an employee here five years ago. I don't need a tour. I went ahead and took it. In five years, every single building had been, there had been an upgrade to it. Like, the college knows facilities. I fully trust Ryan and the college to build out a great facility. And I fully trust the partnership that we would have with the city to have a great working relationship, and that would be my goal. And I think it's extremely impossible to do. And, you know, again, I think everybody in this room would be in somewhat agreement if, if, if a certain entity is gonna, you know, put forth that type of money for something. I don't think ownership would be out of the question of something that they would want out of it too. Like I said, I want this agreement to work. I'm willing to, you know, work with whoever to make it work, because it needs to work for the city. It doesn't just need to work for me and the college or Mike and the college. It needs to work for the community. And like I said, I'm born in a city, spent for about ten years, college, some other stuff.
And I call them, I call them two of the colleges on the list. I'm not, I didn't call private colleges because I think they're just enough different. But I thought both U N K and Northeast. And sometimes they work, and sometimes they don't. It depends on his administrative leading of those entities. And so I think we can get rid of a lot of finger pointing if we can draw that line and say, this is ours and this is yours. But these things break, it's on you to fix them. When it turns into a place, it's on you to fix them. I'm not having to come to the city council with it, I need to give your pockets another million dollars to fix this at this time. That's on us, and I think we proved that with what we've done with our facilities, that we will maintain our facilities, and they will be something that the city of McCook is proud of. And we will partner with the clubs, we will partner with the legions, we will make sure that those fields get used by more than just the college.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I do have one quick question, just curious. We were gonna go out and ask if there's gonna be a city owned facility, I think they may agree on that. What changed between there and this new project?
I don't think the contract ever said it was a city owned facility. I think where we got to meet, I think where we were at the end was, and Pam could correct me because she was in all of those meetings. We had talked towards the end before you decided to pursue the Walters property, that we would sell the city the ground underneath the fourplex that the city would own and operate. And that changed then when the city said they wanted to go with the Walters life, and let's flip it over. Okay, Pam?
That's not true.
We had come to an impasse, and so our last offer had been, because you said you can only, you only have five million, and we said, okay. So we will go out and do the fundraising, and we will raise the fifteen million needed. And the college would then, in order for me as the college foundation, my job is to find money for the college. I, it's hard for me to justify finding money for the city, but I can go find money for the college. So we had come to you and said, we will own the project, we will build the project, and we will sell you the fourplex that the city can then own, and it would be five million. And so that way you would not have the onus on you to do all the building, and we would do that all. And that was where, where we never, never could get off of that.
I don't believe the fourplex was ever discussed as far as us owning it. At the end of the day, the city was going to pay the five million dollars to own the facility.
Five or six million.
Five or six million. That, that's what was.
That's actually how I understood it.
That's the way it was. That's the way it was.
And at that time, so the last time we met, we actually had a conversation saying that the plan as it was presented. So originally, in March of twenty twenty three, the city of McCook had proposed a purchase agreement based upon the representations of the donors and, you know, whoever was affiliated with the donors, that the city of McCook would go ahead and contract with the college foundation. The college foundation or the donors were gonna own the property during the build out. And then at completion, because there were some workarounds that we had to figure out how to make sure that we were complying with the state of Nebraska's laws, they were like bidding rules and things like that. At the very end, we were gonna go ahead and purchase that, so that way we didn't violate any of the bidding laws. As time went on, that changed. So in July of twenty twenty three, a new agreement, purchase agreement was given to us that said the city of McCook was gonna have to finance the build out. The other thing we weren't getting was details as far as what was going to be included with the sports complex, which we need to make sure that we have, so that way the taxpayers know what they're getting ahead of time. And we kept on asking if that information would be in.
I don't think it's a completely fair question to ask when you ask us what's changed, when it has been told to us, it had been told to us at some point during these negotiations, where do we stand? And it was told to us, you can purchase land from the city to build out your fields.
But that was before we realized how much space we had, John. We didn't know how much space we had. This is more than just a sports complex. This is a commercial, residential, recreational complex that is going to hopefully serve as a shot in the arm for the community. And it gives us the ability to expand into other areas that we haven't been able to. So a lot of the conversations that we had, that was when we were just trying to figure out what the heck we were going to do. You know, after we had that meeting over at CBS Constructors, there was a comment that was made by, I can't remember if it was the college or the donors or who it was, that they were gonna contact the city of McCook after two to three days and say, hey, this is where we stand. I never received a phone call from anyone, not a phone call. So we actually reached out to try to get the Benjamins to say, hey, this is kind of where we're at. You know, and, and again, they said, no, you know, we're not willing to go ahead and compromise. And so at that point in time, that's when we had to look at other options and figure out, okay, are there other places where we could build? So that way we're not building on leased ground over at the adjacent complex that we don't own. And so that's when the discussions occurred with, with John and Deborah. So that way we could start trying to figure out, is there a better solution than what we currently have? But we have tried our hardest to work with everyone, and sometimes it hasn't been reciprocated.
Well, I guess I'm going to agree to disagree, because we were given times when we'd be given a purchase agreement. We'd sit down, we'd work out the purchase agreement, the purchase agreement would come back to us, and it'd be completely different than what we all sat down to and agreed to.
That's because the Benjamins changed the purchase agreement.
No, 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 I'm talking about times when we sat in your office.
I don't think this is helpful.
And, and this is, again, I'm just going to agree to disagree with you, and, and because that's long gone.
It is, and we need to put all, we need to put all that behind, but I wanna correct you. The reason why we made changes to the purchase agreement is because the Benjamins made changes. But anyway, we need to bury the hatchet.
We need to move forward on this. This is not, we don't need to be going in this direction right now. I feel like this project is a new, a new beginning, a new, we need to start fresh from this whole thing. I feel like there's been a lot of things that have transpired over this, and I, I really, I think we're missing out on an opportunity to do a bigger project together. And I, and I know you guys wanna own it, and I think that we can work out some sort of lease agreement or whatever that is, some sort of agreement that fits exactly what you guys need, and you can maintain it, you can do all that. I agree with John. You guys do a great job of maintaining facilities. That's, that's great. But I think if you do a separate project, you're not gonna have as much money to do the actual build out that you wanna do without us being in that project together.
I have an answer for that.
What I'm trying to tell you though is I think that working together is the best option for the community.
I don't disagree with you.
And I don't think you guys owning it is actually the best for that, where you're getting your money.
And I may agree, disagree with you on there. So I think, importantly, I think, I think I'd go agree or disagree. There's a lot more benefits for us to own that project, the same benefits.
Do you think that's the best for the community? Or do you think that's the best for the college?
Agreement that we could make, I think it's best for all parties because we are solely responsible.
I'm gonna agree to disagree, okay?
And I think there's a way, and I think Mammoth, they are rock stars. And I really feel there's a way that you can still focus on the project, and we can do a combined project, where the ownership piece, it doesn't really matter what's underneath, where the ownership piece, the project, they can build out separately, but the project itself is a combined project. I truly feel like they were very, which John asked some very specific questions about how they could build this out and how they could mark things apart.
But there's more than just the project build out. There's annexation, there's plating, there's all sorts of different stuff.
And I understand that, yeah.
Sewer, infrastructure, all that, but that's very costly. But to do that as a whole project and lease up that, that piece of it, you're gonna have a lot more money.
So here, here's a question that I wasn't able to answer, and I haven't asked it necessarily. But when you guys are willing to sell to homeowners and commercial, why would you not be willing to sell to the college then?
It's not that we're not willing to, we want the biggest project possible for the community.
So someone's gotta pay for that infrastructure, they talk to the, whatever the college is worth to the city, someone's gotta pay for it.
Yeah, and we're gonna be selling commercial and residential.
Which you said that it would be, and it costs us more if we split it.
It's gonna cost the college more, yes.
We're, we have fundraisers that we will solicit to build up.
I'm, just my opinion, I'm just telling you my opinion.
But someone's gotta pay for it, but it's the city of college. Together, that infrastructure gonna be paid for to finish that project.
I agree.
So our first plan, I guess this is probably a good point, or a good place to kind of talk about the project that we have moving along right here, because there's a lot of people that probably haven't seen this, this concept, or don't know what's going on.
And Ryan has seen it.
I have seen it.
So we are looking at, oh, see, I'll have to look it up. Is there any way that we can scroll up? Oh, sorry, scroll down. So here we are, this is West Q Street, this is Highway eighty three. West Q Street is improved, West Q Street has water on it. It does not have sewer. This is Highway eighty three, it's got water, the street's improved. These streets here are already platted. This is R Street, S Street, T Street, and U Street. What we are talking about is a mixed use tract. So that way we've got commercial, and we've talked about it so many times, but Kyle and I have had so many different businesses that have come to us and say, we wanna move to McCook, we wanna locate McCook, but there aren't any great spots to plant. And so this would alleviate some of those issues. We also would be able to address the residential lot shortage that we know that we've got pursuant to the twenty twenty two residential study that the E D C completed. You'd have single family all the way around here, this is about twenty to thirty lots right here. Then you'd have multifamily residential, so those would be your apartment complexes. And we've talked about maybe doing this as a preliminary plat with the EDC. So that way we can kind of be a little flexible on whether or not this is going to be commercial or multifamily. Or if it's going to be a facility like you see in a larger city that has commercial on the ground floor and apartments up above. This also has been put, so we actually declared this the Blighensup Standard in two thousand nineteen, which allows us to use tax-incentive financing for development purposes. Which at the end of the day is what developers want to see in order to be able to attract them. Of course, we're going to meet the block four tests and all that, but, but, um, that's already been taken care of. We've had conversations with developers. I know that Charlie is in the back here. He's been a part of those conversations. Uh, city staff has been a part of those conversations. One of the things that we're talking about doing, so the MYAP grant, and we've got prices for everything. So we've talked to Miller and Associates. We did a redevelopment plan in October of twenty twenty-four uh, in order to qualify for the MYAP grant. And that redevelopment plan basically falls in line with the Nebraska Community Development Act, which will allow us to use tax-incentive financing for the build-out. But that put our foot in the door at least to go ahead and get considered for a municipal infrastructure aid program grant, which is a BED program. Uh, we applied for four million dollars. Can't say we're going to give four million dollars, but that's where we're at right now with that. Uh, as part of our wastewater treatment plant project, we contemplated, I, I started talking to John two thousand nineteen, would you say? John, does that sound about right?
Well, our formal negotiations started in December twenty thirty.
Right, but when we were talking about the possibility of extending sewer through, we're talking about.
Yeah.
That was probably about twenty nineteen. So we had already been kind of looking at this property. With me and then I know we had had conversations, I know you and Kyle had conversations regarding drainage and accessing the property for that.
Yes.
And, and so we had already been kind of looking at this as a place where we wanted to develop in the future, not knowing what was going to be there. Whether it was going to be a sports complex or residential. I was thinking residential at that time, but, you know, this kind of transpired. But what we had talked about as part of our wastewater treatment plant project here at the Clary subdivision, that's the project that was TIF back in two. We actually did the Blighensup Standard study in twenty twelve that encompassed this project here. And then in twenty fifteen, we did the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment contract for Clary Village. In twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we did the redevelopment plan, redevelopment comp, uh, contract for Quill and Courts. And we started building all this out right here. But also we started building out along R Street. So the six to seven houses that you see on R Street, that was part of a, a long-term plan to try to develop more residential properties on that northwest side of town. The other thing that we did was we built sewer out here, knowing that at some point in time it will just, um, serve Clary subdivision. So those five or six houses that you see then being built out there right now, that's the second phase of Clary subdivision, if I remember correctly. The other thing that we did was we said, okay, this sewer line could actually come off of Clary subdivision, somewhere around here, go east to west on S Street. We could put that sewer line into the highway. So we board under the highway. So that way now we've got access to this property up here. That's all on improved land that can be developed for whatever purpose. So we've been thinking about this for a long, long time. And, and at the end of the day, this project is going to be the project that I think that kickstarts McCook into something great. I'm excited about the future, about the prospects. We want to work with the college. On the flip side, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we don't have the ability to control terms. And ultimately, this has got to be a city facility. It's got to be a community facility. And I think we can work out a use agreement, because we're saying the same thing. You guys want a use agreement? We want a use agreement. But at the end of the day, we've got so many different pieces to the puzzle. We still have to do subdividing, coming up with fundraising. I don't want to fundraise against the college. You know, I don't want to go after the same philanthropic organizations and say, hey, you know, they're doing a project and we're doing a project. Which one are you going to choose? Hey, we're going to go to the community foundation or the Graff Charitable Foundation or whomever it is and say, who are we going to have you pick? Them or us? To me, if it's a combined effort with a joint use agreement that is bargained for through a process of negotiations, that makes perfect sense.
Anyone else?
Can I just add, um, that, um, I certainly support the college being a part of this, um, what's going to happen with the sports complex. And, um, uh, as far as ownership is concerned, I was contacted, like, like you said, I was part of a sewer project a couple of years before December of twenty-three. And, um, it all sounded good to me as far as putting the sewer line, extending it up to Highway eighty-three. But in December of, of twenty-three, I was contacted where the city was interested in buying the land. They were the only ones that contacted me, solely the city. And, um, it was not only the sports complex, but for commercial, development and housing. All of this sounded excellent to me. We were in, in good faith negotiations for ten months over this. The meetings were great. Really no disagreements. But it did take ten months. The one thing the city, um, made clear to me that I got out of every meeting was that, uh, the city needed to own this property to receive grants. That's one thing that stood out. No one else was involved in this, the city of McCook and the city only. Everything I saw was, was good for the city. I agreed with, with, uh, the price, the naming rights, everything. So we entered in a purchase agreement with the city and the city only. And, um, this is where it stands right now. So, would I have entered a purchase agreement if I knew there was another owner or subdivision in this? My answer is no. So this would be a moot point at this place and this stage with the sports complex because I would not have sold that land. I did not need to sell that land. The city approached me. I didn't approach the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's where I stand on it.
Thanks, John.
I do want to clarify another thing too. When, and I'm not trying to, to, I guess I got to give the city's point of view with respect to when we're doing the RFQ, RFP process for the design firm. And the thought process related to who is going to be on the sports committee. And it was, I had this conversation with college personnel. I know I've talked to John about this. I know I've talked to Ryan about this. Our concern was everything was so convoluted and like Brian said, we were at a stalemate. It had gotten so convoluted when we were trying to give you this process with the direction that we were going. There were conversations that were being had. The last thing that I wanted to do was get to this point. And because of prior conversations that maybe groups of us had had with, you know, construction firms, whatever the case may be, that maybe that it would look like there was an appearance of bias. So there's a reason why John and Mike weren't included. There's also a reason why Kyle and I weren't included on there. Because the last thing that I wanted to do was for anybody to have any ammunition to say that we didn't do things the right way. But we built the RFQ to make sure that we prioritized the championship baseball field and the championship softball field. Those were included in there. And I had told the college that, hey, as soon as we select a firm, then that's the appropriate time to add more people to the committee. But all that was done was selecting a firm. We didn't do any of the design work prior to that. Now was the opportunity and obviously everybody's really excited about Mammoth. This is a time to sit down and think about what this is going to look like, what we can afford, what we can do. And the council has already appointed John and Mike to serve on the committee moving forward. So because we want to have the colleges' thoughts on this, we want them to be a participant. They're right at the very top, maybe the most important user out there. So anyway, that was the, the mind frame or the mindset that we had when we were trying to figure out, what does this committee look like? And how do we make sure that the stuff that happened in the past doesn't upend what we're doing right now?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Another thing that would concern me is if, if, if there are separate owners with, right now we're just dealing with the college. What if someone else wanted to jump in and own one of these fields? Can you deny them? That's, that's certainly something that would have to be looked at.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I have a comment. One thing I want to say is thank you, uh, to the city for involving, going after grants. I, I was contacted last week to help write a CCCFFF, a CCF grant. I really appreciate the opportunity. Do that, in all honesty, those grants make a huge difference. I, and I just sent it to you on email. So hopefully you have it in your email log. So, uh, thank you for being proactive in that way. And I have, we have a relationship with the school and I know I'm not, uh, I don't necessarily half represent the school right here. I'm also a citizen of McCook. Partnerships, I've already heard it said by several people here today, that they're extremely important. And for the school to function successfully, we do have to work through these issues. And we have successful partnerships with the college and we have very successful partnerships with the city. And the city, uh, i- is attentive to our needs. Um, so I want to thank, uh, the city for being attentive to our needs and taking, and what I mean by that is taking care of the small parts that we have now. I appreciate the work that you've done there. And I appreciate the work that you've done here. And I have another relationship with the city and I appreciate, and that is the pool. Uh, and I know we're talking about fees later and I'm going to express that we all should be, no, I'm kidding. But I really appreciate the work that you do. But I agree with what's been said. I know Jared, you've, you've talked about it a little bit, so others. But the partnership's really important and we can, you can work through this, whatever this is that you're facing right now. It can be overcome. And I would ask entities not to, to dig in their heels.
Thank you.
Can I hold up from back here?
Yes.
Sue, um.
Uh, you can just state your name and who you will.
Okay.
Grant, Mark, I, I own the rest of McCook, so I have to represent our projects.
We, many of us in this room have spent hundreds of hours together over the last couple of years on this project and the other projects. And it's been a roller coaster. We, we, we set out to do probably something no other community would ever think was possible. When we did this, the YMCA, the pool, adaptive playground and a lot of other things, um, at the same time, the pickleball stuff. And I think most people would think we were crazy. And we're sitting here now with the YMCA that's getting a break ground soon, a pool that people are using, adaptive playgrounds fully paid for. And this thing is sitting here ready to get done. And I know there's a lot of stuff that happened on that roller coaster ride and there's a lot of miscommunication that happened. There's a lot of discussions that have been had. I've been in most of them on both sides. Um, and I totally can see both sides of a lot of the, a lot of the story and why there's some feelings that have been hurt. But I think all of you know what we're trying to accomplish. Whether this ends up being owned a hundred percent by the city or some of it gets sold off, I'm not going to be the judge of that. What I would like to think though is that whatever ends up happening is that this doesn't end up delaying the project by another year. Um, if we can have Mammoth breaking ground this summer because the funds are there and the work's all been done legally on the different agreements, that's what I want to see. Whichever direction it goes. If it can't be done in one way and have it start this summer, then I would prefer we, um, go the other way. Uh, and so, you know, if the college can do what they have to do to fund that whole thing and it can be sold and the city and you can work that out great. But my concern would be whether or not we're so close to that June or July period where they want to break ground that we may box ourselves into one direction. And I don't know if that's what Jared was kind of leaning towards as well or not, but, we're too close. All of us spent a lot of time on this and we all have the same thing. So let's just get it done.
Last question would be is, if, if you have nine million, that's all we have. What does it get better?
It'll have to be built phases, correct?
Well, I know we've got a half million from the hospital. I know we've got eight hundred thousand dollars from the RCRP grant. So we're probably sitting in about ten million, ten trillion dollars right now. With respect to the remainder, we'll go out, we'll fundraise, we'll write grants, we'll do whatever we have to do. But I would prefer to do it with the college. I mean, you know, regardless, I mean, you know, and like, like you had said, I think, you know, it's good for the community, it's good for the college, it's good for Southwest Nebraska, McCook as a whole. Increases, hopefully the population increases the tax base, increases sales tax. Hopefully we can decrease the burden on our taxpayers. Hopefully we can decrease, you know, the concerns that we have as far as trying to bring people to McCook, you know, having the amenities people want. And we're going to make McCook an attractive place. To me, I think we can get through this process. I think we can get a use agreement in place. But my recommendation stands. I think it needs to be a city of McCook facility. And I think that we can work through whatever it is, whether it's a joint partnership agreement, whether it's a use agreement, whatever the case may be. I think we can get that figured out. But we need to know where the college stands. And if the college is willing to go ahead and put something in, maybe even less than four point five million dollars, that's fine. That's okay.
The college has donated a million dollars to college ball facilities. That's what the college has to control. The college doesn't have to.
And that's, and that's fine. And that's fine. We would, that, that would be sufficient.
Decide what takes care of the college's needs. And if we put a million dollars into that and there's not enough money to build our two fields, what have we gained?
Well, there's going to be, that's, those are priority. The championship field is a priority.
The other thing that I think where we've run into issues and you and I have talked about this is it's irresponsible for us to look two point five million dollars in the face here. So we, there is some loyalty to our donors and we can't just say, no thanks, it's two point five million. There's, it's irresponsible for us.
They're more than just ball field donors.
My understanding though is they were willing to go ahead and donate that money for other purposes. But they didn't do it towards the, that is my understanding.
I hope so.
But that's still their call.
Yes, and I.
It's in their pocket, not in the foundation.
And that's where, you know, I appreciate like what John's saying. I appreciate that. It's like one hundred percent, like we still have from, from the whole entire community, we would not be where we are without those donors.
They definitely, they started with this. For sure.
So I think that's just some of what we're saying is like, that's a little piece of where we are. It's, there is some loyalty to that. And so.
And there's been this stuff, so it's understandable.
Yeah. That's just, I mean, that's the politics behind some of this, but that's also where we stand, where we have to be, we have to just be good conscientious of, of donors as well. And so that's, you know, where we say, there's some history there. We go back and look. And that's why I think we are, you know, we want to look forward one hundred percent. That's what we want to do. But that's where we do, you know, have to take some of that stuff into consideration. So.
We understand.
I will say, the last I heard in October was this was the twenty-sixth. And January eighth is the first time I heard this was the March. So for us, then, my comment, the question being is, we don't want the college to hold that up. That was all sprung on us less than a month ago.
Which kudos to you guys and Mammoth, man.
I, I, my question back then was, where are you going to find the funds? And he said, I might have to slow them up.
It is possible. We may not have.
But I don't know what that, I don't know what that means.
So, so we did not think that they'd be able, so when we were going through our RFQ process, a lot of firms were saying nine months, whatever, ten months. When Mammoth came on board, they said, we might be able to get this designed in six months. You know, and then when they said that, we thought, wow.
Let's take advantage. Prices are already going up, so we optimize this.
That's the big thing. Prices are going up all the time. So we need to get this done. We can't hold it down. And they are the gold standard. I mean, they were impressive.
Just, just a side note, we had already had conversations with the farmer. And our plan was to allow him to farm the land this next year.
And that's not it. That's, that was the last I did in October. I didn't know that we were talking this season until three years ago.
I think we found that out, when was it? End of December when we had a conversation with Mammoth? Maybe beginning of January? I can't remember. They came out.
Probably after that because we signed the agreement the end of December.
I guess the end of December they came out so we could work on the agreement together. But I think at that time, that's when they said, we can have this designed in six months. Again, I don't know if that's true or not. I'm not a, a designer, but that's what they told us.
We have been impressed though from the first meeting they came and our. We have been impressed though from the first meeting, they came and our people told them what they wanted, and they came back and they had a redesign within, what, two days or so?
Like a day.
It was like a day, they redesigned it, and I'm going, whoa, they moved quickly.
Well, even after we were here, they sent something right away.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're very responsive.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you very much for coming down. And it's been a great discussion, and hopefully we can work through this because.
Also, I don't know long as I have a plan for like next steps, but I think maybe it does involve more than just three or four.
Can we plan something?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and for us, I think it's important that these conversations, I would like to have a joint meeting between our council and the board of governors. The problem is, we're so hamstrung for time right now, that if we wait till the end of February when they have a board of governors meeting or whatever the case may be, we're never going to move on this as quickly as we need to.
Nate, I will tell you that my board does not operate the same as the city council, because they're spread all over the place. They employ me to give them advice. I have a board member sitting here who's taking notes, and I'm sure she's taking notes, and she will also share with the board. But that is not how my board operates, is to come down and have a meeting, that's just something they're not going to do when they're living in Broken Bow in Oklahoma.
I, I, I think we've been doing some research. I think that there might be the possibility of a Zoom meeting. And I don't know if you could speak to that possibly.
That's what I found in the open, this meeting, the governors, the board of governors, that's all that matters.
I have asked my college attorney, my, my guess is they'd say that's, that's not their role.
Okay. My, my, my biggest concern is if we don't have this conversation as a group, we're never going to get anywhere. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but I think between you and me having conversations, I can tell that time-wise, we're getting closer and closer to when build out's going to have to occur, and I'm just worried that we're never going to get over the hump, and I think we need to get over the hump.
So Ryan, would you please check with your attorney and see if we can set up a Zoom meeting?
I will not, and I will talk to Nate and see what the flavor of my board is, but I can't speak for my board.
Thank you so much for doing that. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And thanks for driving down. Thank you so much.